What's going on everyone? Welcome back to the Tornian Rain Reloaded channel. If you are new to the channel, make sure go ahead and hit that subscribe button. Hit that like and share button. Click that bell twice to be notified whenever I go live or upload a new video. So as you can see, myself and Black Light Revelations are back with another collab video. But before we actually get into what we're about to talk about, I'm going to bring in B L R AKA, well, I was gonna say AKA Rob, I should say Rob AKA B L R. So he can go ahead and introduce himself. Not that he really needs to because y'all already know who he is, but you know, for the sake, you know, of the video, we're gonna go ahead and do it like that.
What's going on, Torian? What's going on, Torian Rain and the I Feel Nothing crowd? What's going on with y'all? Hopefully everybody is doing good. And you guys know about me, Black Light Revelations. All you gotta do is just search my channel. Check it out if you guys want to. I appreciate you guys welcoming me back to Torian's channel. And we are going to talk about, as Torian says, Ron De Snowflake.
And the Florida School Board, right? In their, uh, their new, I guess you can say their new curriculum for teaching about slavery and how it's so-called benefited us. Rob, I gotta ask you a question. Do you feel that you've benefited from slavery?
The only thing that I've benefited from is the realities of our quote-unquote neighbors and what they're capable of. We got the best cultural lesson about another group of people that anybody could ever ask for. And I think it's the fact that we did get such a good in-depth and up-close cultural lesson about these group of people that they're upset with it and they wanna change the way that things are taught.
Right. I can tell you who did benefit from it, and that was the ones who did own slaves. Cause according to, according to any document you can find related to this topic, it stated that the former slave owners actually got paid reparations when chattel slavery was officially over, you know, for loss of labor. Unfortunately, the labor did not get anything. They actually had to work for it. And unfortunately, if you've been watching my Black Massacre series, many of those towns got destroyed.
Yep.
And that was post-slavery in most cases. So usually, as y'all know, whenever me and Rob come together, collab, we usually are going in on these samples, but we switching it up today. As a matter of fact, we only got, as far as I know, one video that we gonna be going over, and that's gonna be towards the end. But most of this stuff is going to be article-based. Now, many of y'all who are watching right now already have seen some of these articles, but we gonna present it to you in a way that you haven't probably haven't heard it. So we're gonna kickstart it off with this article right here that's coming from NBCnews.com. Now you can see who, well, you can see who's in the picture, but you can see what it says right here at the top. New Florida standards teach students that some black people benefited from slavery because it taught useful skills. The standards which were blasted by statewide teachers' union as a step backward were approved Wednesday by the State Board of Education. As you can see, on the left is Ron De Snowflake, and on the right is the Florida Education Commissioner Manny Diaz Jr. Just on that alone that I just read, Rob, what does that say to you before we even read anything?
Yeah, well, for one, I find it interesting because there's nobody black involved in his black history. And basically, this was a one-sided thing. What I wanted to ask you though, and I'm curious, you know, if people would leave a comment in the chat. Why do you feel that these people are so micro-focused on rearranging the way that our history is taught?
Oh, that's easy because the talks of reparations. See, they feel that if they can rearrange it like that, then that means why would we ask for it? If we so-called benefited from slavery, why do they need reparations then?
Right.
That's really all it goes back to. The talks of reparations and it constantly being in the ether and constantly, I don't know if you've seen it, but trending on social media. As a matter of fact, yesterday, and we're recording this on July 22nd, by the way. On yesterday, July 21st, I actually saw reparations trending on Twitter. I think it was like number one trending. It's gotten to the point where reparations trends like once every other week now. So it's constantly out there. I think, I think I even saw foundational black Americans and reparations trending at the same time. So it's gotten to that point where it's constantly in, it's in the air. So it's not going anywhere. And in an election season, it's really not going anywhere. So I think with the ramp up and talks about reparations a lot is where this is coming from. They figure if we can rearrange how this is, then you know, they can, then we can put something in there that says, you know what? It wasn't that bad. Remember the McGraw-Hill textbooks in Texas that they were trying to say that slavery wasn't that bad? And a lot of black people down there fought back against that, and them books never came out. So they're trying to do the same thing here. And the thing is, if it wasn't things for like the internet, we would probably never know about this. They would have slipped this right on through and we would never know. And that's, and that's the way a lot of policies back then did because there was no internet. So you didn't know.
Right. And the thing that's interesting about it, right, is that this, if there was no internet, we wouldn't know. And what's interesting about this is because now that Ron DeSantis is the governor of Florida, you know that they've been re-carving the voting districts in order to try to disproportionately break up some of the concentrated black areas. So if they read, uh, if they redistribute the way that the representation is as far as the voting, it would make it even more difficult for the people who are in the legislature or people who are in the government bodies down there who are, you know, actually in tune with this kind of stuff, because you know, a lot of those people down there are just Democrats, shills, the few that are down there. But the ones that actually are on the right side of history about this, it will make them even, make it even harder for them to fight because of the way that they're playing with the numbers as far as redistricting goes.
Yeah. And also too, it's something that kinda arrived in my mind this morning before we even started this, is that you know how they love to say, oh, black people, y'all need to stop living in the past. Slavery was so long ago. It wasn't that bad. You know, so-and-so freed the slaves and whatnot and whatnot. This aids right into that, that this feeds right into that.
Right.
If they can convince people, the masses, that it's not that bad, then that makes it even harder on us. And I told somebody on Twitter a couple of days ago when this first came out, I told people, I said, this is them doing this is not directly affecting black people. This is going, as far, when I say that, I'm talking about black kids who they're really targeting are the white kids. They have to convince the white kids early on through indoctrination that slavery wasn't that bad. Cause remember a while ago, Ron DeSantis said, we need to, in so many words, we need to comfort the feelings of white kids.
Yeah.
So what do we do? We're gonna lie to them.
Yeah.
Which that way they won't get quote-unquote bullied and teased and all types of stuff. So you feel like, okay, we're gonna lie to them. And that's how we're gonna do it. Why? Because that's what they've been doing so far. I mean, if, you know, like they said, if it isn't broke, don't fix it.
Right. I agree 100%.
But with that being said, we're gonna now start going into the article itself. It says, Florida public schools will now teach students that some black people benefited from slavery because it taught them useful skills, part of a new African-American history standards approved Wednesday that were blasted by a state teachers' union as a step backwards. The Florida State Board of Education's new standards includes controversial language about how slaves developed skills, which in some instances could be applied for their personal benefit, according to a 216-page document about the state's 2023 standards in social studies posted by the Florida Department of Education.
Now, here's my question for you real quick, Tori. Allegedly, right? Let's just say that there is some truth to this, and there were some skills that were developed from out of slavery. Now, my question is, how did they benefit anybody personally when black people weren't allowed to fully participate in the United States commerce system until post-Gym Crowe? See, because the thing is, is that, and remember, like, one thing that I always talk about on my channel is the weaponization of utilizing slavery as if that's the only thing that happened. You know what I'm saying? Like, 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 it, when, when white people use that facetious argument of slavery took place long ago, slavery wasn't the, I mean, like slavery did take place long ago, but slavery took place long ago. It ended, and then there was the entire period of the time from when slavery ended until the time when black people were fully integrated into American society. And when I say integrated, I'm not talking about the kind of integration that everybody talks about. I'm talking about being integrated into the financial system and allowed to legally participate in commerce. The emancipation legally is nothing more than a property release. So if I take a couch and I emancipate it from my home, I've sat it outside for the garbage. However, that couch is still looked at as property. It's not looked at as a part of society. We weren't a part of society until post-civil rights. So how did any of these skills benefit anybody for anything for that duration of time? What's the net present value on the amount of GDP contribution that we would have made based on our own revenues from utilizing those alleged skills that we supposedly got? There was none.
Exactly. And that's a huge time gap too. I'm talking about like, you think slavery officially ended in 1865? And when you're talking about civil rights, that started in like 1954. That is almost 100 years later.
Yeah, I agree.
And people wonder why the waste, the racial wealth gap is so large? Look at that time span.
Right. And in finance, there's this concept called sunk costs. You know what I'm saying? And those are, all of those amounts of money that we could have possibly been earning from the time period of post-slavery until Jim Crow, all of the maximum or minimum amount of those dollars, if you do the net present value calculations, that is the, that is a sunk cost of being able to live and make money in a US capitalist system. We, we didn't have access to be able to make those dollars or accrue compounding interest or equity on those dollars that we would have been saving.
Exactly. Other language that has drawn the ire of some educators and education advocates include teaching about how black people were also perpetrators of violence during race massacres. Now, you know, I just wrapped up the Black Massacre series.
Yeah, well, that was because there was no Martin Luther King to tell us to just turn the other cheek when white people were coming through on horseback trying to kill everybody, but whatever.
But look at how they said it, to say that how black people were also perpetrators of violence during race massacres. See, that's also part of the rewriting, basically saying that, oh, Black Wall Street got bombed. Oh, it's because it was a black person's fault that it happened. Oh, Rosewood got destroyed. Oh, because it was a black person, it's reason. For it got destroyed. It had nothing to do with the usual suspects.
Where was there, what, what was the white race massacre that we perpetrated violence on against white people? Cause that's what they're trying to imply with that.
Right. I can't think of even one. A lot of the massacres that happened with them happened with each other.
Yeah, this, they act like.
That was, that was infighting right there.
Right, right, exactly.
The language says that instruction includes acts of violence perpetrated against and by African-Americans, but is not limited to the 1906 Atlanta Race Riot, 1919 Washington DC Race Riot, the 1920 Okeechmee massacre, the 1921 Tulsa massacre, and the 1923 Rosewood massacre. Meanwhile, in Tulsa, you had that dude out there trying to say that Tulsa wasn't, the massacre didn't have anything to do with race, even though in every document it's about race. Then you had that judge that basically declined all three of the survivors who are like in their hundreds of getting reparations. The Florida Education Association, a statewide teachers' union representing about 150,000 teachers, called the new standards a disservice to Florida students and are a big step backward for a state that has required teaching African-American history since 1994. And we also know what else happened in 94 too. Right. That crime bill, and we know who that affected and who signed it.
And a doso.
How can our students ever be equipped for the future if they don't have a full, honest picture of where we've come from? Florida students deserve a world-class education that equips them to be successful adults who can help heal our nation's divisions rather than deepen them. Andrew Spar, president of this union, said in a statement. Governor De Satan is pursuing a political agenda guaranteed to set good people against one another. And in the process, he's cheating our kids, Spar said. They deserve the full truth of American history, the good and the bad. The union said it is troubling that at the high school level, the standards conflate the 1920 Okeechmee massacre when at least 30 African-Americans were killed for attempting to vote with acts of violence perpetrated by African-Americans. Like I said, do you see this? It's like, have y'all been watching my channel? Because it's like, I talked about that massacre a while ago, a while ago. I think I talked about that maybe back in May. Yep. So it's like, I feel like, I'm not trying to toot my own horn, but I am a little bit. But I'm like, I talked about this. It, the video is probably damn near an hour or over an hour long. Yeah. So they're telling you right there, and I going back to what I was saying, why I'm doing this? Because you never know what kind of tricks they're gonna try to pull, and they're doing it right here.
Yeah. And I, I think that is imperative with all of this stuff going on for content creators like us to make sure that we put an adequate amount of history into our content.
Yeah, definitely. And in middle school, the standards require students be taught slavery was beneficial to African-Americans because it helped them develop school skills, the union said. Updates to the African-American history curriculum were required by a controversial 2022 law that Governor Ron De Snowflake dubbed the Stop Wrong to Our Kids and Employees Act, or the Stop Woke Act, NBC Florida reported. A spokesperson from the Florida Department of Education on Thursday provided a response to NBC News questions through a statement from Dr. William Allen and Dr. Francis Presley Rice, who are members of Florida's African-American History Standards Work Group. The new standards were defended in the statement as comprehensive and rigorous instruction on African-American history. We proudly stand behind these African-American history standards, the statement said. The intent of this particular benchmark clarification is to show that some slaves developed highly specialized trades from which they benefited. This is factual and well-documented. But again, going back to what you said, if, first off, I need to see a list of these skills that were developed. And two, where would they apply in American society post-slavery?
And how much money, capital, business was made?
Yeah, exactly. The intent of this particular benchmark clarification is to show that some slaves developed highly specialized trades from which they benefited. This is factual and well-documented. The statement continues, some examples include blacksmiths like Ned Cobb, Henry Blair, Lewis Latimer, and John Henry, shoemakers like James Fortin, Paul Cuff, and Betty Washington Lewis, fishing and shipping industry workers like Jupiter Hammond, John Shavis, William Whipper, and Crispus Addicks, tailors like Elizabeth Keckley, James Thomas, and Marietta Carter, and teachers like Betsy Stockton and Booker T. Washington. It's disappointing that some detractors would devalue the research from the work group and reduce it to a few isolated expressions without context, the statement said. A representative for Governor DeSantis could be immediately reached for comment Thursday. In January, DeSantis's administration blocked the new advancement, advanced placement course on African-American studies from being taught in high school, saying it violates state law and was historically inaccurate. The state pointing to six areas of concern and works by Kimberly W. Crenshaw, Bell Hooks, Angela Davis, and other black authors. That same month, DeSantis and Education Commissioner Manny Diaz Jr. discussed the issue at a news conference. They said that the course was a Trojan horse for quote-unquote indoctrinating students with a left-wing ideology under the guise of teaching about the black experience in African-American history.
Unbelievable.
Yet they're trying to rewrite it.
Right.
In their image.
Right.
That's why I said I can't wait to see what's in that curriculum.
Right.
Let's see, let's go on to this next article. Now, this one is coming from USA Today, and it says, DeSantis's State Board of Education approves new rules for teaching African-American history. And to those of y'all watching, some of these articles may sound slightly the same, but we just wanna make sure we covering all our bases here, just in case. You know, hopefully, you know, if one article leaves one thing out, another one might have.
Right.
So this one says, in a historic move, Florida State's Board of Education has approved new separate standards for how, I'm gonna say, black history must be taught, or black American history must be taught to millions of students. The decision Wednesday comes after the snowflake and the Florida State Legislature having recent years passed a host of measures restricting how topics such as race and gender and sexuality can be taught in the state, including at the collegiate level. This is why I told people that if people thought Trump was scary or that Biden was bad, imagine having this dude as president.
Right.
And I'm glad that, uh, Professor Black Truth did a recent moment of truth about him basically saying how like, how I've been saying, he's a one-trick pony. And when it comes to the ballot, they're not running against black people, but let him, let people like him tell it, he is.
Right. In his mind, he is.
Earlier this year, DeSantis and the State Department of Education also took direct aim at College Board Advanced Placement Course in Black American History, banning it from the state. The course is one of the main avenues through which high school students in the US study black history at a, at an in-depth level. On Wednesday, after more than an hour of public comment with a majority of speakers opposed, the Board of Education voted unanimously to approve the social studies standards for black American history for kindergarten through 12th grades. I would like to know who was on that board.
Right.
By Democrat, cause they say unanimously.
Right.
Which means it was a wide range of people who were for rather than against.
Yeah, and there was no pushback, no nothing.
Yeah, like they all like, it's almost like they all saw it, and they said, yep, this is it.
Right.
This is what we're gonna go with, you know, yeah. That's why I said I would love to know what's in that curriculum. Yes, opponents say the curriculum leaves out Florida's role in slavery. Well, there's one part right there. There you go. Okay, there's, there's one part right there, leaves out their role in slavery. The oppression of black Americans places some blame on black communities and uses outdated language. So well, there you go. So now you get an idea of what's not in there, and why they approved it.
What's funny is they, what, you know, they, you, you've heard the talking points about the slave trade and quote-unquote, black people selling black people?
Yeah.
What, what did black people in Africa have to do with black Americans and slavery and everything going up to Jim Crow?
Yeah, and, and I'll even go even further. Let's just hypothetically say Africans in Africa did sell slaves or give their people into bondage over there to PC from Europe. Number one, PC from Europe didn't have to take them. They could have easily said, no, this is wrong. We can't see ourselves owning people as, you know, property or whatever the case, but they didn't turn it down.
No, they sure didn't.
And also too, and also too, what kind of deal was it? Cause you know, they are very cunning and manipulative. Who knows what they told them over in Africa, what they were gonna do? They could have said, we're just gonna take them on a little vacation. And they probably like, oh, okay, well, okay. And with promises that they will return them.
Right. And another thing too is that, um, they, uh, when you have a, a human trafficking situation, or when you have a, a purchase of stolen goods situation, the seller and the buyer are both guilty of the crime.
Yeah, but they tried to make it seem like one-sided, and that's why we always see, especially on Twitter, they would say, well, Africans did sell, you know, Africans, but they leave out like, how did that deal really go down? Were they manipulated into it? Were they told lies? They were most likely told lies. Uh, like, what else went down with that deal? It wasn't just, oh, they sold them and that was it. And like, again, going back to the point I just made, they could have turned down the offer and said, and had some morals about themselves and said, no, that's not a good idea. But oh no, 400 years. Yeah, and on top of that, let's not forget that here in America, that wasn't the first stop. They made a couple before they got here.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And then, uh, uh, another thing too is that when it comes to, uh, to, to that slavery, um, they like, it still doesn't account for the Jim Crow issue or any of that stuff. It doesn't account for the black massacres. It doesn't account for Oregon kicking out all of the black people and taking the businesses. And you can see what's going on clearly because Florida has completely deleted their particular part in slavery, which means that they're not teaching anything about Rosewood, and that's in Florida.
Exactly. I forgot what somebody, I had saw somebody on Twitter had compared Florida to something. I forgot what it was, and that would have been the perfect way to describe it. I forgot what they said. Um, the article goes on to say, a group of 11 organizations, including the NAACP and the Florida Education Association, criticized the state for omitting or rewriting key historical facts about the black experience. We owe the next generation of scholars the opportunity to know the full unvarnished history of the state and country and all who contributed to it. Good and bad reads a letter to a board member. At the board's meeting Wednesday in Orlando, members defended the curriculum and said a factual representation of history was included according to state standards. In 1994, the legislature passed FS 1003.42, which created the African-American History Task Force and requires instruction of history, culture, experiences, and contributions of black Americans in the state K through 12's curriculum. I wonder what was in that task force.
I wonder who was on it.
That too.
Officer Tatum, Thomas Sowell, and Candace Owens.
Well, well, as far as Fakim and Candace goes, I think they were relatively young, but the other two most likely, yeah, could have been. Everything is theirs, said Mary Lynn Maggar or Mogar, who was appointed to the board by Governor Ron DeSantis this spring, which tells me she isn't black. The darkest parts of our history are addressed, and I'm very proud of this task force. I can confidently say that the DOE and the task force believe that African-American history is American history, and that's represented in those standards. But Genesis Robinson, political director for advocacy group Equal Ground, said the curriculum only identifies and recognizes racism and prejudice and does not go into depth. What groups in power promoted violence against and disenfranchisement of black people in the United States?
Right. And it doesn't talk about what ally groups like Native Indigenous people helped them with that.
Mm-hmm. That's why I said it's up to us. See, I knew I was on, again, I'm toot my horn. I knew I was on to someone. I created that series. I said, I knew, I, even when I first early on started it and did like the introduction, I told people that the series is going to trigger you, but it's gonna have a huge benefit later on. Now we're seeing it. How ironically that we're, I'm at the end of my series and this is popping up.
Yep. Facts. And shout out to you for doing that series. That's, it's an excellent series, you know.
Appreciate it. When you couple these standards with the environment, the hostility towards daring to talk about certain subjects, it creates an environment where there's going to be a complete removal of these conversations and of these lessons in the classroom because nobody wants to run afoul of all of the laws or policies that have been put in place, Robinson said. The battle over social studies standards is the latest in a struggle between the Snowflakes administration in Florida's black American communities and educators who say his educational agenda targets black, here it goes, brown and academy Floridians.
What are the brown and academy Floridians, and how are they involved in any of this?
You know, they gotta squeeze them in there somehow. Last year, DeSantis, who was running for the Republican presidential nomination, signed the Stop Woke Act, which restricts how races discussed in schools, colleges, and workplaces, and prohibits any teaching that could make students feel they bear personal responsibility for historic wrongs because of their race, color, sex, or national origin, AKA white students. I just told you about that. I just couldn't remember the exact wording, but there it is right there.
Does, uh, does the Stop Woke Act and the race discussion restrictions, does that restrict white people's use of the N-word?
Of course not.
No, okay.
Of course not. There's gotta be some loopholes in there somewhere.
You know how much I love stupid questions, Torian.
In this spring, the State Education Department rejected the College Board's Advanced Placement African-American Studies class, saying it violated state law because of topics like Black Lives Matter, Black feminism, and reparations.
There you go.
Oh shoot, clicked the wrong damn link.
See, that's, that's, that's that stuff right there.
All right. The AP class has still not been approved to be taught in Florida. This is the first year the state has created separate standards to teach African-American history, said Paul Burns, chancellor of Public Schools for Florida's Department of Education. Opponents pointed out several issues in the curriculum. Elementary and middle school students are not required to learn about black American history past Reconstruction. The middle school curriculum includes a clarification that states instruction includes how slaves develop skills, which in some instances could be applied for their personal benefit. And in high school, we're learning about the Okeechmee massacre. The curriculum states, instruction includes acts of violence perpetrated against and by African-Americans. This whole thing basically is saying, we are going to remove the part that white people did and focus solely on everything that black people did for or to or against themselves.
Yeah, I was just about to say, so they're just basically gonna Thanos snap anything that happened, uh, post-Reconstruction, huh? So I mean, how, how does, how does that, that's?
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, that's, that's part of, I don't know, you know, people watch that hip-hop cartoons channel. Neely Fuller Jr. talked about how, um, you know, they're, they're trying to rewrite and control reality. That is literally an example of that, literally an example of that. So people need to start taking issue with that and actively, actively saying and doing things about it. You know what I mean?
And let me just say this before we go forward. This has been approved. This is not something that's going- This is not something that's going to a desk to be signed off on. This has already been approved, meaning it's going to be in the curriculum. And we're just getting a taste. This is just a taste of what the curriculum is, is, what is gonna be in there. This isn't the whole thing, but just the fact that this is just a small piece of it is scary to want to find out or know what's in the entire thing. It's almost like, why would, you might as well not even teach it at all then. If you're gonna do all of this.
Right, exactly.
I would rather you not teach it at all than bastardize it and put a bunch of lies out there.
Well, see, if they bastardize it and they bastardize it successfully over time, over time, what's bastardized and revised will become alternative facts.
Hence the word woke.
Hence the word woke.
When you look at the history currently, it suggests that the Okwe massacre was sparked by violence from black, from black Americans. That's blaming the victim, said State Senator Geraldine Thompson, who was listed as an, an emerita board member on the task force's website. The Okwe's massacre is considered the largest incident of election day violence in US history, according to the Orange County Regional History Center. In nineteen twenty, Moes Norman, a black man, tried to vote but was turned away from the polls. Later that night, a white mob tried to find Norman at his friend's house. His friend July Perry was lynched and other black community members were murdered and their houses burned. Most of the black community fled Okwe and never came back. That, mind you, this is what they did just for someone wanting to vote.
What I, what, what, what I think that people really need to understand here is that these people said that their progress by this behavior and these ethics is okay and permissible. That opens up a lot of wormholes. So, what I'm saying is that people should, when figuring out discussions about power and empowerment, just remember what American culture says is acceptable in order to get yourself on top. That's all I'm saying. You can, you know, people can connect their own dots with that.
Right. The curriculum also does not mention that Florida seceded from the Union during the Civil War. The standards are so porous because they're incomplete, he said. At the beginning of Public Commons, Task Force Chairman Glenn Gilzine defended the work group's efforts and reiterated DeSantis's stance he took in February when the governor was accused of whitewashing African American history by requiring changes to the AP Black American Studies course. Black history is American history, and we've heard that repeated time and time again this morning, said Gilzine, who has been appointed to numerous boards and commissions by DeSantis, including his latest position on the Florida Commissions of Ethics. Let's be clear. Florida already requires the teaching of black American history, but the new standards align these requirements and will hold teachers accountable to ensure that complete and accurate black American history continues to be taught. And that's that article. So what did you think about that?
It, it, basically, it's, it's a lot of all of the things that we have been saying coming together into fruition. And I'm not surprised by any of it. And I think that it's time for people to start developing a strong pushback strategy.
Right. Now, I did have one more article as far as like the Daily Beast, but I skimmed through it and it's like, if I read it, it's a culmination of the two articles that I just gave, so I'm not even gonna do that one. So, Rob, I know that you said you had some articles that you wanted to share.
Yeah, and, uh, basically what they are, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut mine down to two, because you did a good job with the explanations of what this thing is. Uh, what I wanna do in the two articles that I have is kind of show specific examples of how they try to water down, uh, particular, uh, elements of slavery or make it look as if slavery, uh, benefited black people for the totality of it. So, uh, initially, I wanna ask this question. What were the vocational skills that black people got from slavery? How were they able to make that and use that to make money here in the United States? What businesses are still around today as a result of that? How much wealth was generated as a result of these alleged skills? And were those skills obtained voluntarily or by force? Because my question is, does a jail GED have the same, have the same weight as a public school, the high school diploma? You know what I mean? Is, is that kind of situation there? And I think people should ask these questions and not just accept this. You know, there doesn't need to be, uh, people trying to, uh, twist knots in their brain to try to rationalize insanity. You, you rationalize logical things, not things that are insane. You know what I'm saying? Like Ron DeSantis saying slaves who were blacksmiths parlayed their skill. How?
And look at that smirk, my god.
You remember that TV show, Beauty and the Beast?
It was a show?
Yeah, you, you, you young, so you probably don't remember it, but there was.
I only remember the, I only remember the movie. I didn't know it was a show.
Yeah, if you, if you Google search Beauty and the Beast, the old TV show, Ron DeSantis looked like the beast before they made him up. You know what I'm saying? So now here, it says, Florida governor and GOP presidential candidate Ron DeSantis demurred at first, but then elaborated on a particularly controversial change in the narrative about American slavery that will be taught in Florida to students after the Florida Department of Education reconfigured its curriculum to ostensibly rid its, rid itself of wokeism. So now, and so now, ridding itself of wokeism basically means ridding itself of addressing any issues that white people need to be accountable for.
Basically, they, it always goes, it always goes back to that, but they, but let, let Joey Manarino tell it. It has wokeism or woke, whatever, how they bastardize it, has nothing to do with race. It has nothing to do with black people, because go, also according to him, there are more woke white people than there are woke black people. That's what he said.
Yeah, well, that's why, that's why they're doing this, because the woke white people woke up and realized that in red, in their checking accounts, there's a little tab that says balance due, and it's the reparations. So they woke up to that reality and they don't like it. You know what I'm saying? So now here says the changes, which have drawn sharp criticism for diminishing the role of race in American history, drew exemplary widespread rebuke for allegedly presenting the idea that slaves benefited in some way during their time in captivity by, uh, developing certain skills. The new narrative sparked outrage in high places, with Vice President Kamala Harris accusing the Florida Board of Education of trying to quote unquote, gaslight us. So, I mean, she should be able to identify that. She did that her entire campaign. So shout out to her for recognizing what she does. You know what I'm saying? You, uh, want me to play this little video clip here?
We can. I was gonna say for the end, but I didn't know they was gonna put it in this article, but you could, have you seen the video?
Uh-uh, we can save it to the end. Let's save it to the end. Oh, yeah, yeah, we can save it to the end. So, uh, let me see, so down here, it says, uh, DeSantis, who denied having contributed anything specific himself to the controversial curriculum changes, advised a reporter to take up the inquiry with the Education Department. Now, I'm, if I'm not mistaken, didn't he handpick his Education Department?
Yes, he did.
So, he, he basically, he, he did put everything in place. He, he basically handpicked people who are gonna do exactly what he, what they told him to. You know what I'm saying? So now here it says, these were scholars who put that together. DeSantis said, all of it is rooted in whatever is factual, he added. So that's interesting. So do you wanna check this video out right here?
We can.
All right, let's see what they're talking about. Uh-oh, hold on, I'm gonna turn it up.
Well, you should talk to them about it. I mean, I didn't do it, and I wasn't involved in it. Um, but I think, um, I think what they're doing is I think that they're probably gonna show, um, some of the folks that eventually parlayed, uh, you know, being a blacksmith into.
Like who? Name three of them, since there are so many.
He, he couldn't name one.
Anybody in the comment section, can you guys name three black slaves that have created legacy billions of dollars equivalent to what Walmart, GE, and AT&T have created here in the United States based on slave skills? Name them for me.
Right, can't name one.
No.
And that's why, and you saw, and you saw how sassy he got with her with the response.
Mm-hmm, he got real Don Lemonade-ish.
Real roll, real roly-poly. Like, I, I guess that I'm a good reader of body language, and I picked up on that sass the minute he opened his mouth.
Uh-huh.
Put his hand on his hip and everything.
Oh, yeah, he got real zesty with it. He got, he got zestfully mean. All right, I'm gonna run it.
Into doing things later, later in life. Um, but the reality is, all of that is rooted in whatever is factual. They listed everything out, and if you have any questions about it, just ask the Department of Education, you can talk.
So if you, if, if they listed everything out and you're aware of that list, name us three things off of the list.
He, like I said, he most likely didn't read it. You can tell that Ron DeSantis is one of those people from a long range of people who gets very easily annoyed when it comes to talking about anything dealing with black people. Whether to, whether current or in the past. Like I said, this guy just harbors anti-black American in particular hatred. He most likely doesn't have, he probably most likely has a disdain for black people, period. But we're talking about us right now. So, yeah, that, that's where he is. Like, everything that he does, like that Stop Woke Act, that was definitely something that, you know, was targeted against, you know, uh, black Americans, and so was this.
Yeah, facts. I agree, one hundred percent.
About those folks, but I mean, these were scholars who put that together. It was not anything that was, uh, that was done politically.
So you just let people put something together and you, what, are you telling me you didn't look at it to prove it? You just said, oh, it's against black people. Okay, I'll sign off on it. So that's what, that's the vibe I'm getting.
Right, and it's not anything done politically, despite the fact that we all know that the political think tank, the Manhattan Institute, developed the idea of woke being a bad guy. And Christopher Rufo directly provide the, provided the narrative for all of that stuff to you, and you've had a conversation with him and Fox News about this very situation.
Remember, you, remember, he also said that Florida is the state where woke goes to die as woke is some kind of an entity.
Right. But then we're not gonna talk about it, because a lot of quote unquote, woke died in Rosewood, but we're not gonna talk about it.
I'm saying, they say one thing, do another. Like they said, they always talk out both sides of their neck.
Right. Well, let me stop. But the governor did not, or I'm sorry, but the governor did offer his idea of what the new narrative meant. As he understood it, they're probably going to show some of the folks that eventually parlayed, you know, being a blacksmith into doing things later in life. Who are we talking about? Uncle Ben and Aunt Jemima? The Zataran's guy, like, who, who are we talking about?
He just kinda like, just randomly threw out blacksmith.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I'm still not convinced. If these facts are so apparent, then they should be easily available. You know what I'm saying? Like, if I say, well, if somebody says, well, there's no black civil rights, uh, activist, literally, black people didn't do anything to get themselves out of civil rights. You can name a ton of civil rights activists. You can name groups, you can name organizations. And that's because there is a large amount available, right? So since there's a large amount of black people available who quote unquote, parlayed their skills to create economic empires here in the United States, we should at least be able to name two off the top of our head.
Exactly.
That's a, that's a very small request. That's a reasonable expectation. You know what I'm saying?
I said, they going, they literally managed to shoot themselves in the foot every single time.
Yeah, and I hope it went through a artery. You know? So now, this here is an article from the Tampa Bay Times, and it says, benefited from slavery? Critics say some of the state's examples were never even slaves.
Of course they weren't.
Imagine that. The battle over Florida's new African American history standards grows more heated. All right, so now here it says, the Florida Department of Education faced angry reaction this week to new African American history standards suggesting some slaves benefited from the skills they learned while enslaved. Responding to the criticism, the department issued a statement Thursday offering sixteen examples of historic figures that it said fit that description. That they developed highly specialized abilities that helped them later in life is factual and well documented, the department stated. Can you name any of those documents?
I couldn't name one. I'm, I, I, I wanted to ask you if you knew any of these documents, because apparently them things must be locked in, in a bunker somewhere way into the core of the earth where no one can find them. Cause I, I have no clue. I have no clue of whatever is they're trying to convey here. And apparent, neither do they.
Yeah, no, they don't. Not at all.
Hence why the title says the people that they mentioned weren't even slaves.
Right.
Remember, not to bring, well, shoot, I'll bring Trump into it. Remember what Trump said about Frederick Douglass? I will never forget that.
Yeah, I mean.
His supporters right there eating it up.
Yeah, and, and look at all of the, look at all of the people, like George Bush calling Africa a country. I mean, thi- this is, this is literally a patterned behavior. At this point, it's not.
Well, George Bush was a C student anyway. This is the same guy that when they went to tell him about nine eleven, he was reading to a bunch of grade school kids with the book upside down.
Wait a minute.
And the kid had to help him.
Wait a minute. A C, a C student?
That was a, that was a nickname that a lot of people gave him back then.
At, not at Yale, was it?
That's where he went?
Yeah, Ivy League schools.
Well, let me guess, he got in on legacy, right? Did he get on a legacy?
Might have.
Cause I don't know, I don't know where, I don't know where Herbert Walker Bush went. So I don't know if, or even his mother. So I don't know if he got in on legacy, but I'm willing to bet he didn't get on on merit.
And you know what's interesting? He's not the poster boy of benefiting from quote unquote, legacy.
And some schools have already started to overturn it.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a matter of time, you know? Well, thank goodness we don't go to school and all we do is commit crimes. We don't have to worry about that stuff.
Yeah, according to mainstream media.
Right. So now here it says, as for more information on Friday, it cites, it cited as referenced, The Colored Patriots of the American Revolution. A nineteen eighty-five book, or eighteen ninety-five book by William Cooper Knell and Encyclopedia of African American History, sixteen nineteen through eighteen ninety-five. A two thousand six book educate, edited by Paul Finkelman. Now, I'm curious as to if William Cooper and Paul Finkelman are black historians.
I'm about to look it up right now. What's his name? William Cooper Knell?
William Cooper Knell.
Okay, William Cooper Knell, um, he's black, but he kinda looks, he kinda looks like, uh, he almost looks like Abe Lincoln. Like, if you was to see a picture of him, he looks like Abe Lincoln a little bit. But he is, but he's definitely black. You can tell even with the, how to, you know, cause you know how the pictures were back then. And what's the other guy's name?
The other guy's name is William Cooper Knell.
No, I got him. That's the one that said, looks like Abe Lincoln.
Oh, Paul Finkelman, I'm sorry.
Paul, Paul Finkelman. That's a white guy. You can tell by that last name.
Yeah.
Come on. You could tell.
Exactly. So now here it says, Alex Lanfrancconi, a spokesperson for the department, said the experts stand behind their examples. Francis Presley Rice, a co-founder of the Yocum African American History Association and chairperson of the National Black Republican Association, provided the information to the department. But remember, this isn't political. It's not political.
Yeah, they always say it's not political, but it all, for them, it always is. Just like they took the word woke and made it political.
Right. Right. You know what also is interesting? It's not political, but it's a politician leading the charge. This isn't coming from the school education board itself, or it's not coming from just a random group of students complaining, or it's not coming from a random group of parents. It's literally coming from the governor, who's a politician, but it's not political.
Exactly. Like, again, say one thing, do another, and then they try to make it seem like, like we are the dumb one. When we call it out.
And then they distance themselves away from any criticism as to never have a face-to-face, uh, conversation about any of it.
Right.
It is what it is. So now here it says, but other sources offer conflicting descriptions of the sixteen historic figures, and critics came forward to attack the department's claims. Several argued that nearly half of the figures highlighted by the state were never enslaved.
Nearly half.
Nearly half. Near, so let's give, let's say forty-nine percent.
Yeah.
Were never even slaves.
But they wanna, but you just heard Ron the Snowflake said that this is gonna be factual information.
And he said.
The Lord School Board said it's gonna be factual information. Okay.
Yeah, and he said he, basically said he trusted him blindly.
Blind leading the blind.
Yeah, cause he didn't have any information. He said you'd have to ask the board. Okay, so now when we're asking the board, everything comes apart.
Right.
Like, others who did spend time in slavery did not gain their skills from their servitude. Now, how would they gain skills from their servitude when they weren't allowed to read and write? How, how do you, how do you? how do you learn technical skills if you're not able to read and write? You learn basic skills if you're not allowed to read and write, because during slavery, education was outlawed, right? So how do you learn anything if education is outlawed aside from when you're able to sneak and learn things? Or if you learn things through whatever your labors or your tasks were?
Usually anything that they had, if it was anything that they read, it was usually something from the Bible, but they will only let them read certain excerpts from the Bible. I learned that when I was watching Birth of a Nation.
There you go. So now here it says, they just threw out a bunch of names to make it seem like something good came of slavery, said Andrew Spar, president of the Florida Education Association Teachers Union. The reality of it is, the facts don't back up what they're saying. He mentioned Booker T. Washington, included on the state list as an educator. Washington was enslaved, but did not gain his skills until after being freed at age nine. He worked in mines and as a houseboy before entering school, according to Tuskegee University, which he founded in eighteen eighty-one, which I find fascinating that they utilized Booker T. Washington's name to try to throw him out there. But they didn't utilize any historians that graduated from the house, uh, from the, uh, from the Higher Education Learning Institute that he, uh, that, that he founded.
And what I found to be also interesting about that is they mentioned how he gained his skills after he was freed, not while he was still enslaved.
So how do you benefit from slavery?
So technically, he's not a slave anymore when he gained them skills.
Right. Something that they love talking about when people aren't slaves or how slavery affected anybody. So dear white people, how did slavery affect Booker T. Washington's skills? You, you know what I mean? How does, how did slavery affect Booker T. Washington back then? After, after nine years old?
That's like asking Bethany Mandel to define woke.
Right. That's like asking, that's like asking Ron DeSantis to explain any of this. You know? So now here it says Georgetown University postdoctoral fellow Joshua Stein took issue with the state's use of James Fortin and Louis Latimer as examples. The department said Latimer was a blacksmith born into slavery in eighteen forty-eight and freed in eighteen fifty-two. And Fortin was a shoemaker born into slavery in seventeen sixty-six, who escaped in seventeen eighty-four.
Now, hold on, go back up. Let's do the math on that. Again, going back to Booker T. Washington. It said Louis Latimer was a blacksmith born into slavery in eighteen forty-eight and freed in eighteen fifty-two. So he was a child. He most likely, of course, was not a blacksmith as a child. They said this, uh, this Fortin, this James Fortin was a shoemaker born into slavery in seven, in seventeen sixty-six, who escaped in seventeen eighty-four. So he was still relatively young. But it doesn't say that Louis Latimer was a blacksmith while enslaved, and it doesn't say James Fortin was a shoemaker while enslaved.
Right.
Which means all of this most happened when they, when, when James Fortin escaped from slavery, which means he's technically not a slave anymore. And when Louis Latimer was free, he wasn't a slave anymore. Again, going back to Booker T. Washington, which means they gained these skills post-slavery. See, this is, see, Rob, I'm glad you pulled this article up. Because this is like, literally like, we can literally break down what they're trying to do. When, basically what they're saying is, if you were born a slave, and even if you're no longer a slave and you became this after slavery, you still technically gained this while you were a slave. Many of them weren't even doing this when they were enslaved. They were, a lot of them were still relatively young.
Right.
Or children.
Right.
So I see, I see the wordplay. I see what they're trying to do. That's why you gotta really dissect what it is that they're trying to put out there.
Yeah, exactly. What they're trying to do is they'll say, they'll take people who were former slaves or people who, who were free. And then those people that have noteworthy history or places in the United States, they'll say, this is a skill that this person developed during slavery. And then come to find out, they were a slave from ages, you know, birth till four. And then they did everything in their life, in their adult life that they accomplished after being free.
Exactly. Which means that they, which means they gained those skills and gained those careers post-slavery, not during slavery.
Right. And now remember, this stuff was done and created by a board, a handpicked board of people by Ron DeSantis. So if Ron DeSantis is picking people that do such poor quality and manipulative work like this for this particular thing, what else has he done to the state of Florida?
Run it into the ground.
Right.
More, no, run it underwater more likely.
Right. Well, that's actually happening naturally, and Ron DeSantis is speeding it up. So now here it says, a museum dedicated to Latimer states, he was born to two self-liberated formerly enslaved patient, uh, parents. Self-educated, he worked as an inventor, participating in the development of the telephone and incandescent lighting, among other inventions. And again, so this is another question that people who love Ron DeSantis love to ask. Well, what did black people ever invent? Well, here you go. The Museum of the American Revolution describes Fortin as a black entrepreneur born to free parents. He served on a privateer ship during the Revolutionary War and became a wealthy sailmaker. So.
Now, look at that. It said he was born to free parents.
Right. So he was never, this guy was never a slave.
It's never a slave.
And he became a wealthy sailmaker.
And just like it was saying about Booker, uh, uh, Booker T., was that Booker T. Washington that you read before him? It was, then it say something about his parents were formerly enslaved.
Yeah.
So technically, he wasn't enslaved either.
Right. Right. Let me see Booker T., where's the part about Booker T. Washington?
Go down, you go down a little bit more.
Yeah, here it is. Okay, so it says, he mentioned Booker T. Washington included on the state list as an educator. Washington was enslaved.
You know what? You know, it wasn't him. It was Louis Latimer. I'm sorry.
Latimer, okay.
Yeah, Louis Latimer. Born to two self-liberated formerly enslaved parents.
Right. But this, but, but up here, it says the department said that latter, so the department didn't, uh, depict history accurately. Here it says, the department said Latimer was a blacksmith born into slavery. A museum dedicated to Latimer states he was born to two self-liberated formerly enslaved parents. So the museum says that he was, uh, self-lib, uh, he was born to two self-liberated parents, which would have meant he was born free. The Department of Florida Education says that he is a black.
By the, the Santas.
So that goes back to that, what's the credibility of these people? And it's not really shaping up.
Yeah, see, then see that's, and see, that's how they confuse you.
Exactly, exactly. And that's one of the reasons why these people need to be challenged and challenged so hard and stay on them. You know what I'm saying? And that's why, like, you know, I always say, never back down. Because when you have history on your side, it's a battle of attrition. The only way that you can lose if you don't have, if you have history on your side, is if you just submit and give up and let the other side continue to run the narrative. You can never do that. You have to stay on it until your last dying breath.
Exactly.
You know what I'm saying? So now here, it says, not only were they not slaves, Stein wrote on Twitter, their provided professions were also incorrect. So you're wrong on both halves.
Damn. So they lied on them being enslaved and on their career?
And on the careers. Yep. Identity fraud. You know? So now here it says, the department listed Henry Blair as a slave who became a blacksmith and an inventor. Biography dot com and several other sites state that there is no information indicating that Blair was enslaved. He invented a corn planter and a cotton planter, becoming the second black person to earn a US patent.
And see, all they're doing, and see, I'm glad articles like this exist, cause what they're doing is they're piggybacking off of what DeSantis said about the blacksmith. And then that's what made them go do their research and pull all of this up. They said that they, the department listed him as a slave who became a blacksmith. So again, you're lying that he was one enslaved and two, they was a blacksmith.
Right, right, absolutely.
Because notice that, I, I found, like I said, I found it interesting that DeSantis said that about a blacksmith, because that was the typical quote-unquote job that a black man could do back then. It was like something that was really rela- that was really relegated to them just doing.
Right.
But not every black man was a blacksmith.
Right. Facts. And another good thing about this too is it goes over, it, it, it goes over the history and the ingenuity of, you know what I'm saying, foundational black Americans. Freeman A D O S. It, it shows that there is a huge contribution that we've had to the wealth of knowledge that the United States has that has, you know, created its world dominance. I don't want to call United States a great country, so I'll just say it's, is contributed to the world dominance. You know what I'm saying? So now here, it says, the department referred to Paul, I think this is Cuff, as a shoemaker and a ship owner born into slavery and escaped to freedom in seventeen eighty-one. According to paulcuff.org, operated by the West Point Historical Society, Cuff was born in seventeen fifty-nine to an emancipated slave. Having worked on whaling boats, starting at age fourteen, he established a shipping business in Massachusetts. So now who are you gonna believe more? Some Ron DeSantis, uh, some, some Ron DeSantis, uh, cronies? Or the West Point Historical Society?
Now, you know, many out there gonna go with the former.
Right. Which is funny, because those are the very people that don't want government control. And here the government is controlling hi- history. These are, these are the literal people that say, well, we're under attack and tyranny by the government. The government is censoring everything and they're rewriting history. Here's an actual example of the government rewriting history, but because it's not the history that makes them look good, we're gonna act like we don't see it. The same way we act like we don't see mommy and daddy deleting each other in the suburbs.
Right.
Or the same way we're gonna act like we don't see this pattern of violence that little Timmy had about two weeks before he decides to blaze up a first grade classroom. I don't know what to say. You know what I'm saying? Like, I don't know what to say. So now here it says, the statement mentioned John Chavis as a fisherman born into slavery, who later was known for his work in teaching. The North Carolina Museum of History states that Chavis was born into a free black family in North Carolina and fought in the Revolutionary War and became an educator.
So the only thing they really got about is the fact that he was born in North Carolina. Right. I'm surprised he even got that right.
Right. So now here, an individual named Genesis Robinson, political director of Equal Ground Florida, said he was disappointed, but not surprised at the information. He said, members of the public have been trying to point out problems with the standards since the state first introduced them for input and comment. They don't care about an accurate recounting of black history, Robinson said. And of course not, we know that. Since Senator, uh, Chevron Jones, a Democrat, uh, in Miami Gardens, expressed dismay that the Department of Education would put forth questionable examples to advance what he considered a disgusting lesson that anyone might benefit from being enslaved. I want them to do that in other moments in history where people were oppressed and try to explain why this was to their benefit, said Jones, who is black. It is so disingenuous. So now what I've, you, you know, with this guy, shout out to him for, for throwing some black dog whistles out there.
Cause I would have said the same thing, knowing me, I would have said the same thing. And yeah, we know exactly what group he's talking about. And we know they, and they wouldn't dare do it. Just like, just like when I did the video about how Germany is going to be, starting next year, paying one point four seven, one, one point four billion dollars out to Holocaust victims, well, survivors across the globe from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven. And I had said in, and that's why I titled the video, Keep That Same Energy, because they are not gonna come at them the same way that they come at us. There's no task force, there's no meetings, there's no polls, there's none of that. There's no pushback. But when it comes to us, it's everything that I just mentioned.
Yep. Yep. That's crazy. So now, um, I don't know if you, uh, wanna do another one, but, uh, there was an article from Meditate, and it talks about a Florida paper tearing apart the defense of black history standard on personal benefit of slaves. We can go through that one.
Yeah, we can go to that one, yeah.
If you want to. Okay, cool. Let me see. I'll, I'll put it up real quick. Let me see Florida paper. Okay, here you go. Let me see. Okay, cool. So now this one here says, Florida paper tears apart defense of black history standard on personal benefit of slavery skills. The Tampa Bay Times, okay, so it, this basically is just a summary of, uh, what went on as far as what was in that, uh, that, uh, article that we just read. The Tampa Bay Times tore apart the group responsible for Florida black history standards that include instruction that slaves develop skills, which in some instances could be applied for their personal benefit. The Florida Board of Education voted Wednesday to approve a curriculum on black history that includes teaching that slaves develop skills, which in some instances could be applied for their personal benefit and requires teaching acts of violence were perpetrated by, against and by African-Americans. Vice President Kamala Harris torched the new curriculum in two speeches on consecutive days, but the leaders of the group who wrote the guidelines issued a statement defending them and listing sixteen examples they say support their work. But T B T staff writer Jeffrey Solacek published an article exposing many of the examples as faulty because their subjects were either not slaves or did not learn their skills while enslaved. And noting that the leader of the group that wrote them, Dr. Francis Presley Rice, is a chairperson for the National Black Republicans Association. Okay? So there's this little, uh, this little news clip down here. We could check this out if you want to.
You can. Go ahead.
Let's see.
Later this morning, Vice President Kamala Harris is headed to Florida to speak on protecting the freedom to learn and teach the country's history. This coming as the state's Board of Education approves new standards for the teaching of black history. National correspondent Alex Miller explains some critics say it's a step back.
Members, we're gonna take a, uh, ten-minute break.
A chorus of boos from audience members as the Florida Board of Education approved a controversial new curriculum for African-American history. Yet Wednesday's vote was unanimous. Education Commissioner Manny Diaz Junior vehemently defended the decision.
If anyone takes the.
Manny Diaz Junior.
Junior, yep. He's on the thumbnail.
Yeah. So there you go. So if people wonder about the quote-unquote brown.
Like, yet a black and brown quote-unquote, there isn't one.
The time to actually look at the standards, you can see that everything is covered. From elementary school where we start talking about those who have been prominent African-Americans. And as age appropriate, we go into some of the tougher subjects, all the way into the beginnings of the slave trade, Jim Crow laws, civil rights move, everything that occurred throughout our history.
But education and civil rights advocates say.
I got, I got a question for him. Would he approve of this if they were coming for, say, I don't know exactly where he derives from, but from his lineage, would he approve of what they're doing when it comes to him?
Well, we should find out. We should find out. What, see if the Congressional Black Caucus had a, had a backbone, what they would be doing is getting their people together in Florida to make sure they push, uh, a bill to make sure that it's taught how communism and Castro benefited Cuba. And any talk of anybody saying that communism and Castro wasn't a benefit to Cuba, all of that stuff would be taken out of the schools. You know what I mean? Any of these, any of these, uh, people that come to the United States from any of these oppressive countries, any, any of these people that come, come at us about our history here, we need to talk about how Stalin was a benefit to Russia. We need to talk about how certain dictators were benefits to other, uh, countries. I guarantee you that'll wake people up.
Right.
Talk about woke. That, now, that's, that's, that's really, that's really, that, now, that would be the Start Woke Act.
Otherwise, arguing key historical facts about the black experience are missing from this new curriculum. And students should be allowed to learn the full truth of American history.
We have an obligation to continue to speak up and lift our voices and let the state know that they owe a responsibility to adhere to the Florida statute and teach black history in its fullness.
Perhaps the biggest issue for critics, a section in the state's summary of the new standards, which include instruction on, quote, how slaves developed skills which in some instances could be applied to their personal benefit. A coalition of groups, including the Florida Education Association Teachers Union, is calling for a rejection and redrafting of the standards. The battle over the new curriculum is the latest in the ongoing dispute between Governor Ron DeSantis and Florida's African-American communities and educators. Last year, DeSantis signed the Stop Woke Act, a piece of legislation that restricts how race is discussed in schools and workplaces. It prohibits instruction that could make people feel they bear responsibility for.
You do. Again, that's, again, again, that's going back to, again, that's going back to protecting the feelings and coddling the feelings of white students. Going back to what I said at the very beginning of this video, when I said, granted, what they're doing is, is targeting black American history, but they're using that to really go, uh, they're really talking to white students. Cause he is basically said it right there. That's the, that's part of his Stop Woke Act, is to coddle the feelings of white students. Because he has basically said it right there. That's the, that's part of his Stop Woke Act, is to coddle the feelings of white students.
They should call it the Stop Tears Act.
But they want to say that we're being the victim. Okay.
That's what they should call it. They need to stop calling it the Stop Woke Act and call it the Stop Tears Act. You know what I'm saying? The only problem is that I'm hungry and tears are delicious. You know what I'm saying?
For historic wrongdoings because of their race, sex, or national origin. And earlier this year, the Education Department rejected a pilot version of an AP African-American Studies course, saying it lacked educational value. Alex Miller, Scripps News.
All right. So there's that. All right. So now here, it says, "They just threw out a bunch of names to make it seem like something good came of slavery," said Andrew Spar, president of Florida Education Association Teachers Union. "The reality of it is that the facts don't back up what they're saying. He mentioned Booker T. Washington included on the state list as an educator. Washington was enslaved but did not gain his skills until after being freed at age nine. He worked in mines and as a houseboy before entering school, according to Tuskegee University, which he founded in eighteen eighty-one. Georgetown University postdoctoral fellow Joshua Stein took issue with the state's use of James Fortin and Louis Latimer as examples. The department said Latimer was a blacksmith born into slavery in eighteen forty-eight and freed into eighteen fifty-two. And Fortin was a shoemaker born into slavery in seventeen sixty-six, who escaped in seventeen eighty-four. The museum dedicated to Latimer states that he was born to two self-liberated formerly enslaved parents. Self-educated, he worked as an inventor, participating in the development of the telephone and incandescent lighting, among other inventions." Now, one thing that I think is really important is that the integrity of black history has to be preserved at all costs. And the reason is because it's so delicate because of the nature of what we went through. A lot of the history that we have, or a lot of the things that we do have, have been destroyed.
Yeah.
So what we do have that is accurate, uh, terrorist organizations like the Florida government should not be allowed to attempt to derange it.
Right. Because like, and I always believe in domino effects, like what they do in one state, they're gonna try to do in a lot of other states.
Oh, yeah. Whatever DeSantis does, Abbott and Stitt will follow. So you can definitely imagine that this is gonna happen in Oklahoma. It's gonna definitely happen in Texas.
For sure. Now, now, you know, pivot back to myself. Now we're gonna talk about the, uh, this statement that your favorite person, Rob, or one of them, made, and that's about Kamala Harris.
Oh, my.
So, so, you know, we were kinda dancing around as y'all heard us mention it, you know, when I say we will save this one for the end. And I'm gonna read the article first coming from Reuters and then I'm gonna play the video. It says, "Vice President Harris blasts Florida extremists over education guidelines about slavery. Keep in mind, it's the same woman that said early on she wasn't gonna do anything specifically for black people."
Now.
U.S. Vice President Kamala Harris criticized Florida extremists on Friday for backing educational guidelines that taught revisionist history about slavery in the United States. Florida's Board of Education approved new guidelines this week with benchmark clarifications, including one for middle school students that states instruction includes how slaves developed skills and skills which, in some instances, could be applied for their personal benefit. Harris, now peep this. Harris, the first black and Asian-American woman to serve as vice president.
Hmm. Well. She's black and Asian, huh? Blasian.
Look, now you see why I call her Kamala the Chameleon.
Yeah.
Because, because we, how many identities has this woman had?
She's had them all.
Over the course of, uh, the, over the course of the last two years.
She's had them all.
Flew to Florida, a political swing state whose governor Ron DeSantis is running for the Republican presidential nomination to live, to deliver a blistering speech condemning the new guidelines. "Adults know what slavery really involved. It involved rape, it involved torture, it involved taking the baby from their mother, and involved some of the worst examples of depriving people of humanity in our world," she said. "How was it that anyone could suggest that in the midst of these atrocities that there was any benefit to being subjected to this level of dehumanization?" The Board of Education approved the new teaching guidelines for kindergarten through high school on Wednesday. Florida's Education Commissioner Manny Diaz Jr. said during the board meeting in Orlando that the guidelines go into the quote-unquote tougher subjects of slavery and racist violence as appropriate by age. I'm curious, what tougher subjects?
Right.
Because honestly, many of us have touched on the quote-unquote tougher subjects.
Right.
And I, and I doubt they're gonna do it. They probably won't even scrape the surface.
When you're talking about tough, what they're talking about, they're talking about white standards of tough.
Hmm.
Things that make, you know, people not feel good and stuff like that.
I'm gonna kinda skip around a little bit. It says, "DeSantis, who trails former President Donald Trump in polling for the Republican nomination, has taken on quote-unquote wokeness as a key theme for his campaign. The governor, who also has battled Walt Disney over its criticism of a Florida law banning classroom discussion of sexuality and gender, accused Harris of being misleading about Florida's standards. Democrats like Kamala Harris have to lie about Florida's educational standards to cover for their agenda of indoctrinating students and pushing sexual topics onto children. Florida stands in their way, and we will continue to expose their agenda in their lies." Well, you know what? I'm not gonna give her any credit, nor am I gonna give him any credit for what they said. They're both, they're, they both known to lie. Known to lie.
Facts.
As far as I'm concerned, these are two peas fighting with each other in the same pod that's rotten.
Absolutely.
On the inside and out. As far as, based on that statement.
That's what I was saying about her identifying gaslighting. Oh, good for you. You, you recognize what you do, huh?
All right. So with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and play the video. This is only twenty-three seconds. And, and I want you to, because I already listened to it. I want you to listen to her tone. And you'll notice that she's never talked like this before. So it was like, what are you really trying to do? What are you trying to pull?
Just today in the state of Florida, they decided middle school students will be taught that enslaved people benefited from slavery. They insult us in an attempt to gaslight us, and we will not stand for it.
Us?
And that's the whole thing.
Who is us?
Right. What is gonna do with- Like you said, like you said, Rob, earlier, that she's been known to gaslight us. And when I say us, I'm talking about black Americans.
Right. Because she's not a black American.
She doesn't even claim blackness.
Right.
They do it for her.
Right. Sh- if I'm not mistaken, she's a Jamaican, American, Asian-American individual who's lived in Canada for some time.
And I've heard Indian.
Yeah. So who is us?
I'm guessing, no, I guess she, no, no, no. What happened? Well, she got her blackness when she went to Howard.
Yeah, she, she, uh-
In pledge.
Ski wheat. She was ski wheating. You know what I'm saying?
But, yeah, I just said, like, like, listen to her tone and everything like that. I'm like, okay, this is a nice little act. Are you trying to get an Oscar?
Yeah, she is. She was, she was, she was drama queen-ing it up. You know what I'm saying? Like, that was a, that was a, that was a, ooh, look what they did. Now get mad, y'all type.
That's what I said. I said, what she said wasn't wrong, but I would not, I would have preferred to not hear it from her.
Ah, yeah, I would, I would, I would prefer not to hear that or anything ever in the future from her.
Yeah. I'm like, I'm, I see what she's trying to do. She's trying to get back into the good graces of black people. Because true, because I think a lot of pe- black people who were for her have fallen off of her.
You know what? I think I just screwed up, bro.
What's that?
I think I just messed up. I think I just gave her like, I think I just gave her a campaign hack by accident.
What's that?
I think that if she shuts up right now and literally never says anything until twenty twenty-four, she'll highly increase the likelihood that she'll get a lot of votes. Because I think that everybody would support a quiet Kamala Harris.
Uh, I don't know if that's gonna work. I think it might be too late.
I think it might be too.
She, she's, she's already said way too much and done way too much already. I still think one of the funniest things that have happened to her was when they dropped all those immigrants off on her front lawn. That, listen, that, I will never, that, that will forever be funny to me. That's like, they literally were just, literally just there. I was waiting for them to pull out a tent and maybe like a, a, a little, a portable grill or something and just start having, like, you know, having a little fiesta right there on her lawn.
I bet you she was mad. She probably didn't even know what was going on. She probably came outside in a, in a-
I don't think she was, I don't think she was there.
Oh, she wasn't there?
I don't think she was there.
The, the lawnmower is in the garage, get to cutting and then go back in the house. Like, what?
Yeah. But anyway, y'all, that was the last thing that we had as far as this breakdown goes, as far, you know, us, me and Rob calling out this Florida school board and Rhonda snowflaking as a bonus, you know, slightly roasting Kamala Harris for her so-called fake outrage, because that's really all it is.
That's all it was.
Yeah, like, she's not as outraged as, you know, as we are. No, no, not even close.
Facts.
But Rob, you got anything else you wanna add?
Um, hmm, the only thing that I add, that I got to add is, uh, you know, thank you for, uh, Torian's audience, uh, subscribers for having me on the channel again. Thank you, Torian, for having me on the channel. Um, let us know what you guys think about the video in the comments section. And if you guys have other topics that you'd like to see us review and react to, make sure you guys leave them in the, in the comments section. Or if you want us to even go into more detail on this, let us know.
Right. Yep. And with that being said, shout out to everybody who came through. Like again, like I said at the beginning, if you are new and you subscribe to the channel, welcome. Make sure you hit the bell twice to be notified whenever I go live or upload a new video. Of course, you know, this is not, this is not even nearly the last time me and Rob will be collabing. I think it's gotten to the point where it's become pretty routine. You know, people, yeah, people, people are, you know, looking forward to it. As a matter of fact, Rob, I often sometimes, like, I'm probably gonna do it after this video is done. I often always, after we're done, I always go onto the community tab and tell people that me and you just collabed on the video and went to expect it. People be getting so excited.
Oh, yeah. You know what? Don't tell them anything about the video. Tell them we did a collab and have them put in the comments section what they think the collab is gonna be about.
Right. Oh, yeah, yes. Definitely like, yeah, keep, yeah, like, keep them guessing. I like that. You know, I like that too, you know? I always, I, I, I kinda like to do, I like doing that with my audience, though. Keep them in suspense and keep them guessing. And here's the thing, they could obviously be right, but I won't tell you if you're right or you're wrong. So, you know, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah. And you know what else you should do? You should ma- you should make two thumbnails. Just put a question mark and then put collab. And then after the video runs, then put the thumbnail up so that they don't really keep them waiting.
All right, y'all. Y'all be easy.
All right, y'all. Peace.